Good morning. It's Tuesday, May 7th, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
All right. And we've got minutes, April 3rd.
I move to approve the minutes from April 3rd.
Second?
Moved in second. Any discussion? I will be voting on the minutes as I watch the video and it reflects what I saw, so. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, all right. And public comment regarding any pending resolutions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead. We've got a number of commendation presentations to make here. We've got with us Scott Kopfstein. Is that they say that?
Kopfstein.
Kopfstein, okay, thank you. Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran of the Year. Whereas it comes to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Scott Kopfstein, Medina, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran of the Year for 2024 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. And whereas Scott, as a Vietnam War veteran, has served for over 25 years in the VFW Post 5137 Honor Guard, honoring deceased veterans from all wars as well as coordinating three Medina City Memorial Day parades and ceremonies. And whereas Scott has served as past commander of VFW Post 5137 for three years, doing which his post chartered a Boy Scout troop with the same number designation of 5137, wherein the Scouts have continued to serve county veterans for over 10 years at various functions to honor their service and sacrifice. Whereas Scott has been planner, coordinator, and cook for annual clam bakes, Thanksgiving dinners, and fish fries during the Lenten season for veterans to share good meals and camaraderie together, and he continues in that role after over 10 years of dedicated service. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Scott Kopfstein for his outstanding dedication and service to the veteran community of Medina County and the state of Ohio with his efforts to serve the veterans of Medina County in many capacities. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners commends Scott Kopfstein for receiving recognition as the 2024 Joint Veterans Coalition Medina County Veteran of the Year Award. Want to come forward?
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, no, thank you. We'll come here and we'll get a picture. It gets in the newsletter and all that kind of stuff, so. Now's your chance to say a few words if you'd like. Oh, yeah, sure.
First, can they hear me if I talk?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
First and foremost, I'm really, really honored to accept this award. I guess what I should say is I retired. I've been retired for 30 years. I retired with two pensions at 49 years of age. I worked at a steel mill, so you understand why I got out of there. But other than all the things that I've been able to accomplish over 30 years, some of the stuff, I've had Navy reunions for 31 years in a row until COVID hit. We've been to every place in the United States. We're a very close knit group of Vietnam veterans. We stay in contact constantly. The other thing is my public service. I was able to touch base with many, many parents. I coached fast pitch softball for almost 12 years, and I also coached basketball. And one year, I had two teams on the court. So my wife put an end to that because she never home. But to finish up, this is my last year doing. I did start a kids' fishing derby when my granddaughter was eight years old. She's 33 now. I've been doing 25 years of fishing derbies for the kids in this county. And the, thank God that Medina Eagles gave me a check. We usually get $300 from them. They gave me a check for $1,500. So I get $2,000 to spend on these kids this year. And as far as the, to make it short, but as far as the fast pitch softball, my oldest granddaughter was 12 and the other one was a freshman. One was a senior, one was a freshman. And they didn't lose a game that year. That was the best year. Yep. But the 25 years of fishing derbies, that's, this is the last one.
Thank you once again. Thank you, Scott. We have another commendation honoring Barbie Kirchner as Joint Veterans Coalition Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year. Whereas it comes to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Barbie Kirchner, Lodi, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year for 2024 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. And whereas Barbie married to a Navy veteran and whose own family has three generations of veterans who served in our nation's wars, has dedicated herself as manager of Strike and Spare Lanes, Bowling Alley, and Lodi to help veterans. And whereas Barbie, for the past five years, has implemented bowling for veterans leagues in her bowling alley on national initiative to donate monies to brighten the lives of veterans every day with recreation therapy programs, the veterans hospitals, clinics, and community-based counseling centers. Whereas Barbie, in the past five years, has coordinated two eight-week veterans leagues per year and two individual tournament days per year, which has accumulated in raising over $17,000 from her efforts in Lodi, which brought national attention for her contributions. And at the Bowl Expo Platinum Center, she was listed as the sixth in the nation for her contributions. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Barbie Kirchner for her outstanding dedication to honoring veterans in Lodi and the greater Medina County community to instill the spirit of Americanism, compassion, and remembrance of the veterans of Medina County. Be it further resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners commends Barbie Kirchner for her receiving recognition as the Joint Veterans Coalition Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year Award. We believe in equal opportunities, so do you want to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Can we get both of them together?
Oh, sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Bring your thing up.
You guys want to come?
Oh, us too.
Yeah, all of us. I think we can put all of us in here. Yeah, yeah, we can do it. They can always go wide break.
Good morning. My name is Brian Stewart. I'm the commander of the American Legion in Lodi. I recommended Barbie for this award to a service member overseas. Our heroes are our families back home. The kids who kneel and pray. The wives who take care of the house, pay the bills, and send us cookies and letters and give us a reason to come back. As a veteran, a lot of us volunteer to continue serving other veterans. And we recognize Barbie for her service as a veteran wife to continue serving veterans and her community. She's very charitable, absolutely worthy, and amazing person. We love you, Barbie. Thank you for your service.
And we also have a retirement. A retirement commendation for Cynthia Botson for her 20 years of service with the Medina County Treasurer. Whereas it comes to the attention of the Board of Commissioners that Cynthia Botson is retiring from Medina County Treasurer's office on May 24th, 2024. And whereas Cynthia has been associated with the County Treasurer's office since 2004. And whereas Cynthia has served as a faithful and dedicated employee through the years and performed in a superior manner. Whereas Cynthia started her employment as deputy clerk in the Treasurer's Office and played an active role as a cashier, taking, posting, and balancing statements, organizing, collecting manufactured home tax payments, maintaining bank codes and addresses, preparing and completing real estate tax collection and settlement reports and balancing with the auditor's office. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Cynthia for her commitment to diligent work and dedication to accuracy of the County Treasurer's Office and for her excellent work with the members of the public and other governmental agencies with the utmost courtesy, respect, and diligence. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that Cynthia Botson be and is hereby commended for her 20 years of service with the Medina County Treasurer's Office. Be it further resolved that the Board wishes to take this opportunity to offer best wishes to Cynthia for her retirement. Need a motion? Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or comments?
Well deserved.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, all right. Want to come forward? You want to say a few words or John? I know you. I'll say the words for her. You know, everybody's career path takes a different. Everybody's career takes a different path. And I'm just glad her career and my career crossed. She was a bank teller at First Merit, and then she came to work for our Treasurer's Office. And since then, she's been an extremely valuable member of our team. Words to describe her, I would say hardworking, diligent, dedicated, reliable, honest. She's quiet, but she'll give you your honest opinion anytime. And very, very professional. In fact, she started working as a cashier, but she was soon handling the calls on a first-call basis. So during collection, in a round robin system we have, she'd get the calls first. And she was very courteous with customers and very professional. And she was like the voice of the Treasurer's Office for years. And I had lots of compliments on that. And that's why we don't have automated attendant yet today because you call the office and you get a live person, which doesn't happen too often anymore. So it's really been my pleasure working with her. Everybody in the office loves her. And she's contributed so much over the 20 years. And we wish her the best joy and happiness in her retirement. All right, we'll proceed with our resolutions. County engineer Andy Conrad, who is with us today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I guess.
Yeah.
I have three resolutions for your consideration. First, accepting and awarding a bid for a project known as 2024 Township Pavement Marking Project. The second would be determining the necessity to close county roads for multiple road culvert replacements. And the third is a resolution finding the public convenience and welfare for the replacement of concrete pavement on Lake Road.
Move to approve three resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
And just for your information, the weekly permit list is there. But for the Lake Road project, we did apply and receive some state grant money for, to help us on that. That's a 50% split with jobs and commerce. So it's nice to be able to tap into some other resources.
Awesome. Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Andy. Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds and county funds. And the second is authorizing change order number two for the Ledge and Westfield Generator Project.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Very good. Thanks, Jeremy. Steve Secora, Job and Family Services. Good morning. Morning, Commissioners.
Three resolutions for you this morning. The first is a resolution authorizing a contract between Bryan Media Strategies for Foster and Adoption Recruitment Targeted Marketing Solutions. The second is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds between the JFS 4E Fund and the JFS Public Assistance Fund for children services administration expenditures. And the third is also a transfer of funds from the JFS Children's Services Funds to the JFS Public Assistance Funds for SCP administration expenditures.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Steve. Holly Mirren, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have eight rate increases, three in sanitary, three at Job and Family Services, and two at County Home. Two leave of absence at Job and Family Services, two return from leaves at Job and Family Services, and one retirement at Job and Family Services.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Next, our finance director Brett Thomas. Good morning, Brett.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have six resolutions for your consideration today. The first one is transfers for the gasoline rotary fund in the total amount of $25,017.61. Our second resolution is authorizing a procurement card for the dog shelter. Our third resolution is the purchase of 7,300 gallons of unleaded gasoline for the engineering center. Port's petroleum came in as our low bid at $2,45.95 per gallon. Our fourth resolution is declaration of excess property. A huge chunk of this is JFS from office renovation. And then our fifth resolution is expenses of county officials. Judge Hudson's Court going to the summer conference in Cleveland. And our sixth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $2,656,259.44.
Move to approve six resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Next, Matt Springer, Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have three resolutions for your consideration. The first one is approval of filing renewal application with the PUCO for a government electrical aggregation program for a two-year period. The second resolution is for the purchase and installation of two additional hearing loops at the Medina County Courthouse. And the last resolution is for change orders at the EMA construction project. The original construction project was $752,562. The change orders would represent $82,749 of an increase.
Move to approve three resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Next, we have actually another pro. This is a day of proclamations.
That's later.
Economic Development?
Yeah, that's later. Oh, no, that's now. That's now. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting all confused.
How about that? Every now and then, the chair's right.
I was wrong.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
That's right.
There's so many today.
I know. Proclaiming May 6th through 10th, 2024 as Economic Development Week. Whereas the economic developers in Medina County promote economic well-being and quality of life for their community by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. Whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers actively collaborate with local, state, and federal officials, chambers of commerce, school districts, universities, community organizations, and private sector leaders. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in communities throughout Medina County. And whereas the Medina County Economic Development Corporation has partnered with economic developers in the cities of Brunswick, Medina, and Wadsworth to build a cohesive economic development team for the benefit of the entire county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, do hereby designate and declare May 6th through 10th, 2024 as Economic Development Week in Medina County. Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion and comments? I think this is a fitting proclamation. And, you know, it's one week that we're acknowledging the work they do, but that work continues throughout the year. So I think it's very appropriate to take some time to point out the impact that has in our community.
Absolutely.
Here, here. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Here. And Sheri Patterson with Economic Development Corporation is here to accept. It's like I'm getting my squats in today. And if anybody's been at any of the Economic Development Corporation's events, she's the one that does a lot of work. Make it all happen.
On behalf of us, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheri, while you're here, I'm sorry. What, to that point, what's the attendance looking like for Friday's? Immigration summit? Yeah.
About 120.
Good. Excellent. Good. Super. Hey, thanks. All right. Let's see. Department Updates, Denise Testa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so we've been pretty busy here this past month. For May, we have two concept plans totaling 108 sublots with 155 acres, one in Liverpool and one in Sharon Township. So we're very excited to complete those. For our June meeting, we have a preliminary plan extension in Liverpool and a preliminary plan in Hinkley that we will review. On the grant side, we have the Lodi Bridge that is nearing completion. It is absolutely amazing. So we probably have a little while longer. But we've spent down, out of the 492,000, we spent down approximately 360. So there's still a lot of work to do, but it's looking great, on time, on budget, which that's what we always like to hear. So the LeadSafe Ohio program has launched. So additional information will be sent regarding that. If individuals would like to access the planning website, the application for LeadSafe Ohio for lead remediation is on our website. And we can start accepting those applications. PY23, the Community Home Improvement Program, also known as CHIP, is also well underway. So homeowners who are interested in grants for home repair or home rehab can certainly submit, continue submitting application for those as well. Our next workshop, zoning workshop, is on May 23rd at 6:30. That is open to the public at the Medina County University Center. And on May 16th, I'm serving on a solar energy panel with the Ohio State University Extension. Thank you, Steve, for allowing me to write that. I think that kind of was catapulted into that. So with that in mind, we also, speaking of our community development block grant, we and Matt and Chris, I do have your copies as well. We received 12 applications for the PY24 CDBG allocation program. Two of those applications are from Wadsworth as Wadsworth receives automatic guaranteed funding at 150,000. The 10 remaining applications are requesting a total of $778,432 to be discussed at a special commissioners meeting on May 15th at 10:30. So I've included for your review and consideration a spreadsheet as well as some rating sheets and some additional information regarding the CDBG program for your consideration. So.
Okay, so we'll be addressing this at that special meeting?
Next week. So yes, we've given you a little bit more time than we did last year, so.
Did we already do a fountain here?
So the fountain project, we did award for PY20. However, we were not able to complete the fountain project because we could not find a contractor to complete it.
So how certain are we you're going to find a contractor this time?
Well, the price has increased from the 2020 to, from $35,000 to $90,000. So there might be a little bit more of an incentive for them to put a proposal in. And like I said, the last fountain, I mean, we were, we had sent so many inquiries to contractors that they were asking to be taken off of our list. So I don't know if, you know, I'm not sure. I mean, I guess we'd have to see.
We'll have to balance that against the other.
The other projects.
Right.
Yes, I mean, there are some, quite a few projects in there. Again, we have 10 to choose from, which is a large difference or a difference from last year.
Sure.
Any other questions or?
No, no, good. We'll be addressing it then.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions on anything else? You're good. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Appreciate it. All right. For our call up, Laura Toth, with just a second. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then you can come up. Proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month and May 22nd, 2024 as Senior Day in Medina County. Whereas, May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Medina County older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. Whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. Whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Medina County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities. Reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness, and we emphasize the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month and May 22nd, 2024 to be Senior Day in Medina County. Be it further resolved that we call upon all residents to join us in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens in promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Now you want to come up and then you can do your report afterwards?
I just want, from our advisory council, we have Dave Wetzel here. If you want to come up, the chair. And Karen Williams, who's also on the advisory council. But is it, she doesn't want to come up, which is fine, but I'm so glad she's here, so.
Want to give your report, too?
Sure.
All right.
Well, that's the highlight, so there you go. To continue on the positive note, I wanted to let you know that we received our audit results from West Reserve Area Agency on Aging, who annually audits grant monies given to us to ensure proper spending in matching amounts. We met our requirements. There were no findings and no recommendations, which is a really good result. And kudos to our county clerk, Rochelle Hunter, who keeps up on those numbers. And consistently, we have had very clean audits, which is great. I wanted to report on some first quarter numbers to keep you up to date. There are four packs there. So I'll talk for just a minute about the top sheet, which is the green sheet, which is our Title III services on number and transit numbers. If you see, we're going to start in the middle column, which is kind of weird. But the numbers of home delivered meals served to date is 11,009. In 2023, it was 11,057. So we're pretty much on par there. The next column over, congregate meals served, is 2,041. In 2023, it was 1,548. In 2023, it was 1,548, but we were not serving voucher meals at that time. The Suprema Cafe had not reopened yet. We didn't do voucher meals until June. So that's pretty consistent. What I really want to talk about for a minute is transportation. The number of trips in 2024 thus far is 4,026. That does not include no-shows, which we pay for. I say that because the number's going to be different on the second page. In 2023, our number of trips provided were 2,214. So there is a dramatic difference of trips provided. So if I could ask you to flip to the second page, I wanted to associate that with what transit is costing, not only the agency, but transit. Transit pays for transit as well. We have a grant, and it's great that we can subsidize trips for seniors. But it certainly does cost money, and more trips certainly means more funds. So some of the factors that have gone to increase costs, which you can see thus far this year, we paid $46,785. I can tell you, in 2023, our whole transit budget was $140,000, $140,517. So we are already more than a third of the way through the budget through the first quarter that we have allocated for transportation costs. And obviously, that's due to increased rides. Not only, I can't say with an exact number how much ridership has increased, but I can tell you that prior to the flex system, Office for Older Adults paid a bulk rate for loop rides. So if somebody hopped on the Brunswick Loop, or the Medina Loop, or the Wadsworth Loop, it was a free trip for seniors. So with the flex system, that has all changed. So we are, transit and Office for Older Adults are trying to adjust our budgets because, you know, I budgeted 140. I've already told administration, we're going to bust through that. I don't know where we're going to land, but I mean, it's pretty obvious that, that we're going to bust through that number. But also, the seniors need to adjust. We've had to make changes because, like I said, they could hop on the loop for anything, but we only pay, we didn't know why people were riding. We were just paying for their trips, which is great. But we only pay for doctor's visits, grocery stores, any social service, coming to the senior center. Those are all covered trips. But people were using the transit to go to the salon, and now they have to pay a flex rate, which for most seniors is 75 cents. So it's not a great amount, but it's certainly more than nothing. We were also paying for a couple of seniors to go to work. It's great that we have senior employment and that they were using the bus, but it's just not a covered trip that we can pay for, so.
And those, and those trips aren't reflected in these numbers.
No, these are only, yeah, this is just a portion that we're paying. Now, I don't know if Shannon keeps track of the, I mean, certainly we know who's on our program. I don't know, I don't think he does demographics by age, so I don't know how many seniors, yeah, are riding outside of that.
Based on if it's a trip that's paid for by.
Correct. By us, or under another contract.
That's right.
So that was where I was going to go to, that means your trip count, there are more seniors, that doesn't reflect all the seniors using transit. It reflects the seniors using transit for subsidized.
Absolutely, yeah, yes. Yeah, so it's seniors who are utilizing it for subsidized trips. And the other thing that's affected transit for seniors, which is out of our control, is facilities changing their designation. So the latest example is Liberty, who is now all assisted livings. We do not pay for assisted livings to, for transit. Now, we told them, you were sitting right next to me in a meeting, we told both the clients and administration, but now it's, it's happened. So like in April, we have started not paying for people who live at Liberty. So we've gotten several phone calls. I know transit has gotten several phone calls. So really, we're at a point, I just want to keep everybody updated on the same page. Our costs are hopefully stabilizing. I know we were at 17,000 again for April. It's not reflected in here. I, I wanted to make sure as I keep these stats, this is a new sheet for me, that everyone realizes that not only is OOA paying, there's a cost that transit pays for seniors to ride to. So it's not just our costs, and I think that's important. And Shannon and I have met with county administration, and I keep Matt and Chris updated because we know at some point in the fall, we're going to have to, to make a transfer of funds from levy funds to help pay for this transit cost for 2024, which is fine. And, you know, that's one of the things that the levy can be used for. But if the costs continue to go, we just have to keep an eye, how are we going to handle this in '25, '26, '27? If costs continue to rise, utilization is great, but, you know, we want to be able to pay for that utilization as well. So I wanted to bring it to your attention, and probably every quarter, or at least a couple of times a year, I'll bring this out so we can see where we at, kind of with transit.
So regarding Liberty residents, because when we went and attended the meeting, and indeed, we did kind of indicate as they were transitioning from independent to assisted living in their model, and the residents were paying more. Part of that increase was also supposed to cover the day-provided transportation as well, wasn't it not?
Correct. And I think that as most assisted livings, and this is just, it is a generalization, they'll pay for like weekly trips at this time to go here or there, you know? But not the individualization that transit affords.
Right, and I guess they, it's making that accommodation within their expectations that, yes, if they're going to call on county transit, which they're certainly able to, but it's not going to be a covered expense by the county, they'll have to pay for it. Unless it's one of those under medical or shopping, correct?
Correct. And if somebody is 65 years old or older, those flex trips are 75 cents.
That's right.
If they're 60 to 65, or just under 65, it's a dollar 50.
So, yeah. Okay. You mentioned the bulk rate that you're paying for the loop service?
Yeah, that went away when the flex came in.
So what, what was the number?
Well, we were getting a real bargain.
Yeah. Yeah.
We were paying, I know, we were paying $1,600 a month for all loops. So it is, yeah. And we know that, and actually, you know, and Shannon knew that, too, but we just didn't know where it was going to shake out.
But it was also, didn't have that flexibility of providing a service to the greater community. It was a fixed route.
Yes.
And now that they're actually providing more rides and services, it's, yeah.
Yeah. You got to take it with the bad.
Yeah. Which is, actually, it's been a good thing for transit. It's been a good thing for the residents that are using the service.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The, well, we can talk about that later. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to mention a couple of other things. The farmer's market vouchers will be coming up for distribution sometime in June typically. We never get noticed till like two weeks or three weeks before it happens. So hopefully, by the time I come here next month, I'll have a date. That's always a mass event. It's at the Medina Center. We open early, and then last year, we had 272 packets of farmer's market vouchers that we distributed, which was a great increase. Usually, it's about 200, but I'm thinking with more grant monies from Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging this year, and more utilization of our services, I'm thinking that number will continue to be, you know, in the upper 200s, if not 300, for distribution. I also have newsletters. The blue one is Brunswick, and the green one is Medina. So if you want to take one of each, just to let you know what's going on. And of course, as you talked about in the proclamation, Commissioner Hambley, which, I need a word count on today's meeting, you've done a lot of. Senior Day is May 22nd. We always kind of officially, re-officially present the proclamation to the public. So I'm hoping that you all can make that meeting on Wednesday, May 22nd. It's usually Tuesday, but this year, we're switching it to Wednesday for a variety of reasons. But one of the bonuses on the OOA side is it is not a home-delivered meal day. We do a double day on Tuesday, so usually we have to kind of shift everything around to make sure drivers get their meals. But we won't have to do that this year, and it works better for the Fair Board as well.
It's a Pirates theme.
It is, it is a Pirate theme. So, don't, we're telling seniors, we're telling seniors not to wear an iPad, but, right? We don't want any accidents or anything, but no, we're looking forward to it.
Pittsburgh Pirates.
Well, there, if, sure. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll open up to public comment. Okay, nothing from the public. Discussion session. Matt, do you have anything?
No.
Sorry to interrupt you. All right. Anything from the auditor's office? Anything else? Colleen? Anything for discussion?
I'm, I'm just curious, Matt or Rhonda, maybe you know the status of pickups at the courthouse from the auction? Are we looking pretty good there? Property pickups at the courthouse?
So we completed all this past Friday, and there's still quite a bit in there. So we're going to try to make it available to the department heads once a year.
Yeah, great.
I was also, I was talking to Rhonda, I think it would be good to, you know, let the cities, the townships, and the villages maybe pick one day that they could do a walk-through to see if any of the other governmental agencies need any desks or cabinets or anything like that. So I think it would be nice to have one day where the local entities could walk through and see if they want anything. What do you think?
Anything else, sure?
Yep.
I think they're already, I think Habitat was going to head back out there again.
Yeah, yeah, no, that'd be great.
Take a look as well as Historical Society.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Yep. So that's good. Excellent, excellent. Anything else?
That was it?
Okay, I wasn't here last week when we got to unveil, or at least to show off in the window that. I could really like the look of that with the lighting coming through. Adds quite a bit from Stuart. Did a good job on that. Kind of neat.
It's beautiful.
So, yeah. The other thing I was going to announce, that I did receive a draft letter from Isaac Wiles, Aaron Glasgow, who's the attorney we hired regarding the John Burke investigation regarding the sale of a county-owned vehicle. We will be receiving an updated letter today. We will be issuing a press release as well, just a comment on that. I just want to put in, as a matter of record, we'll be receiving that, issuing that. Secondly, that there will be some policies and procedures likewise that will follow up after this letter. The commissioners over the next number of weeks will be looking to implement to make sure that this situation does not happen again. So at this point, we will issue that later today. I've got nothing else to add, so I don't think there's anything else scheduled.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, everybody have a good day.